Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm on the phone. Was there anyone signed up?
There was nobody signed up.
No one? Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have public participation at all? No one has signed up? No one on the phones? We will move on to the report of the chairman, and I have no activities to report tonight, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Dennis makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Jerry. Thank you very much, Jerry. Any discussion? Dennis?
Is that one on the warrants? Actually, two on the warrants. On warrant, and I don't know whether they can answer this in lines out here, but, you know, on warrant SO 11322, there's an early dismissal fee of $14,068 from 10/22. Isn't that just part of our contract to begin with? Do we pay extra for having people dismissed early?
Let me look at that. That's on the first one.
First one, yes.
I'll get back to that. If we have, I don't know if that was one school that dismissed early. If the high school dismisses early, it does, we do get charged after.
Okay. And a second I need clarification on, and that's on the second one, SO 12022. Item 7330, Beecher Moses, $6,394.50. Was that for a legal consult?
That's legal.
When we were talking about the...
Is that with state or spec ed?
That's special education.
That's spec ed.
That's special fee for that? Okay. Thank you.
Joe, Ron's not here?
I apologize. No, Ron is double booked tonight with the town budget being due tomorrow. He will be here. I told him when we get to the communication board presentation, I would send him a message, and then he's going to come here, so he's here for the executive session.
Yeah, that's fine. You want to talk about an appointment?
Yes, please. Thank you. Yeah, we're very happy to welcome Kristin Navarro to the Monroe Public Schools family. You know, when we opened the preschool position, due to increased enrollment, it led to a lot of internal shifting in our staff. Elisa Rubus took the preschool position. Someone backfilled that, someone backfilled another thing. At the end of the day, when the dust settled, Kristin would, will be replacing the open position that's split between Font Halle and Monroe Elementary right now. Kristin has taught previously in New York City and in Bridgeport, so we're happy to have her onboard. Very difficult to find special education teachers in general, so to get one in the middle of the year was, was pretty lucky.
Good, good. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motions, say aye. Aye, everybody? Thank you very much. Reports to the committees. We will start with our student representatives.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone's having a great Monday. For Valentine's Day, DECA and FBLA, the business clubs, are selling $3 chocolate roses and delivering Valentines during Flex to raise money for the Janet Halpin Business Scholarship. The Memories Matter Club is holding an upcoming snowman decorating contest, and all proceeds will go towards the Alzheimer's Association. And today, on Thursday, the B Positive Club held a World Cancer Day fundraiser, and they sold $2 bracelets during lunch. The club raised over $200 for the Andrew McDonough Foundation, which provides financial assistance to families with, of kids with cancer and funds cutting-edge cancer research.
MASIC had five musicians score high with their auditions for CMEA, Connecticut Music Educators Association, and they were accepted to the Western Regionals Music Festival. Congratulations to Nick Hancock's on alto sax and band, Christian Rodriguez on violin and orchestra, and Santa Sar and Virginia Gerbowski in chorus. These students submitted recordings of their audition pieces in November, and they are now qualified to send in their audition pieces for the All-State Music Festival, which will take place in March in Hartford. And congratulations to the MASIC Color Guard for their second-place win at the MASIC Classic on Saturday, their first competition of this winter season.
Sports have been quite bittersweet throughout the last couple of weeks. Both girls' and boys' basketball had their senior nights last week, consisting of wins that indicate the nearing end of the seasons. More exciting news is that CHIR had their SWCs this weekend and got third place, and dance team competes tomorrow, hoping to bring home another title. Finally, track SWCs brought lots of success to specifically Grace Stevens, who got second in both high jump and pole vault, and third in hurdles. Overall, the winter season has been very exciting.
Great, thank you. Any other reports?
Pension committee, you, is that later?
I'm sorry?
Pension committee, or I'll speak to that if you want.
Go ahead.
Okay. Pension committee met. Nick and I were there. Basically, it's doing extremely well, well above national norms and local norms. The only change we had was basically a 5% change to more fixed assets. We kind of changed the mix a little bit, but it's doing a fantastic job.
Shannon?
And the policy committee met tonight, and at our next Board of Ed meeting, we'll have, we got through a lot. It was, it was good, it was a good meeting, and we'll, at our next Board of Ed meeting, we'll have some items up for first review, some policy items.
Okay, thank you. Joe, I want to make sure we get that on the agenda for next meeting, for first reviews. We'll get that information. Dennis, go ahead.
Curriculum committee met as well. You want to report on that?
Yep.
Try to do it justice. It was a great meeting. Basically, middle school math was pretty much the topic. If you look around the districts and different schools, they name their math classes different things, like college, pre-college, et cetera. So we're trying to equalize naming convention, although there were five different surveys done, and basically, the simplest was really called Algebra, Algebra, right? And make it so everybody can meet grade-level expectations. And that's pretty much what was decided on and what's going to be presented. The second item was really the library curriculum, to keep up with how fast our kids are growing their technology skills. And kids used to learn technology in like fourth grade, now they're learning it in kindergarten for necessity to be able to use the school systems. So there, again, there's a push for changing some of the classes to earlier years, so they can get more proficient at these things at an earlier age. And both, both were well presented and well done. Did I miss anything? No, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from committees and liaisons? Okay. Report of the superintendent, Joe?
Sure thing. Before I ask Darlene to, oh, sorry, Doc. I just wanted, you know, because this just happened today, I just wanted to address the governor's press conference that was made at 4:15, 4:15 this afternoon, to address the mask mandate. If you, if you don't know already, the governor came on today and has recommended that the state mandate for masks in school expire on February 28th, and that the decision moved to the, to individual districts. The way I understand it, and I could be wrong, I talked to Tony Scott, he wasn't totally clear on it, he hasn't seen any language on it yet, but the governor's going to ask the legislature to pass 11 executive orders on Thursday. Among those orders is a delegation of the authority to the commissioner of public, the commissioners of the public health and the commissioner of public edu, of education, to extend the mask mandate to end at the end of the month, on the 28th. Again, following that, districts would have the choice to see how they wanted to move forward. The commissioner of the public health was on the call. She indicated that the State Department of Public Health would be providing guidance for districts, guidance in the decision-making process to move away from the mask mandate, and then further guidance and future guidance on how to respond to COVID in settings, because all of our guidance so far has been predicated on, on mask wearing. Commissioner Jutani, who is the commissioner of public health, agreed with the governor that we're not in the same place as we were almost two years ago. Number one is the availability of the vaccines. We've done a number of clinics here in Monroe. Most recently, we had a clinic for five to 11-year-olds, and they will, they'll be able to get their second dose on February 23rd. And I think everybody's expecting the authorization of the vaccine to children under five coming very soon as well. The commissioner of public health indicated that it would, you know, it wouldn't be one metric to use for guidance that, you know, and that some of the metrics don't have the same meaning as they did earlier. For example, daily case rates, we know that at this point right now, with the proliferation of home testing, it really doesn't matter. But the ones that they're really focusing on and that they're seeing positive trends in are hospitalizations decreasing, decreasing, and vaccination rates, you know, in town. We, I think we have a pretty good record of vaccinations with both, you know, school-age children and the general population. I think we're at a point right now where we wait and see what the, you know, what the legislature does on Thursday.
So they can vote to extend it to the 28th? If they take no action, it expires on the 15th?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, so the only, as I understand it, and I spoke with Tony Scott too, the only reason for us to get involved, this board to get involved with the superintendent, is if we wanted to extend a mask mandate ourselves. Otherwise, we take no action, it expires, and we're following the state. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Just to clarify, so on Thursday, we'll know if the expiration is the 15th or the 28th?
Yeah, 16th or, yeah, or the 1st, actually, yeah.
Oh, the 16th or the 1st. And this Thursday, we'll know if it's the 16th or the 1st?
That's what I understand. I understand the legislature's supposed to vote on it this Thursday.
Okay. And then we'll know if it's the 16th or the 1st.
Yeah, yeah, they'll give us a date, so. So, that's it. We just, we just, if we take no action, we're following the state guidelines, it expires, and it's basically optional at that point. So Dennis and then Nick.
Well, basically, the governor's powers expire on the 15th, but the mandate, at least as I understood the press conference, was really extended through the, the break, so kids could come off vacation and not have to worry about it, or be tested while they were on break, et cetera. So I think that's the time confusion.
Yeah, that's what he said during the conference today, yes. Nick?
No, I was just going to say that I don't, the legislature opens on Wednesday, so I don't know what they're going to do, but the reporting I saw today, Thursday, was just the House, and then the Senate would also have to vote, but I don't think that is going to happen on Thursday. That might go over the weekend, but they, at least the reporting I saw, they were going to get it done before the 15th, so that there was no lapse. But it might, to Shannon's question, I don't know if it's like by Thursday night, if it's going to be stamped, it might be over the weekend, because it has to go through both chambers.
And then to the governor to sign.
Right. Well, yeah, that part can be, they could walk it down, but when you're dealing with, you know, 36 people, it's a little bit more cumbersome than just the one.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll see.
Dar, do you want to come up now and give your special ed report?
So since I last reported, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. In January, there have been four students, we're looking at enrollment, who enrolled in the district with IEPs. Two students moved out of the district, and two students were dismissed from services. Six students were made eligible for services, which brings our total enrollment as of January 31st of 414 students who received special education services. So they continue to come.
514.
514.
Is that what I said?
414.
414, 514. Yes, when I go backwards, we're going, they keep, they keep coming. As I mentioned last month at the end, I said that, you know, many program changes happen after the first half of the school year, and so we're at that point. In January, we had several program changes that included students returning to district, students whose placements were changed or modified, and other adjustments made to related services. So if you look on page one of the attachment for my finances, on page one, you'll see that the negative balance in outside agency line was reduced by a bit more than, a bit more than $57 due to changes in related services. On page four, you'll see that the tuition public line was reduced due to placement changes. So that, that's the available budget was reduced. And also, the available budget in the tuition private line was reduced due to placement changes. So as I say that, and as you look at those numbers, I also want you to know that we're at a point where we have made some changes in placements, but there's some outstanding invoices, so we can't close some POs. So that, in the next month and throughout the year, you'll see, you know, those, those lines will adjust as we, as we're able to close those POs. So the students who are coming back to district, we can't close them until we get invoices from these placements. Our bottom line on page six shows we are still trending positive, and we will also receive an excess cost partial payment in March. Questions?
Thanks, Dar.
Thank you.
Yep. Just two other, just two other quick things up. First one, just a reminder that we have our workshop this, this Saturday, 9 to 12, in, at central office, in the conference room. We'll have Nick Caruso from Cave joining us for that. And then following that workshop, I've asked, we'll meet with Dan Krosick, the principals, and the head custodians at each building to do a Capitol walkthrough, so you can see some of the Capitol needs. I've asked Dan to meet with the principals and the head custodians ahead of time, so they'll be very pointed visits. We'll try to keep it to like 15, 20 minutes each. I know it's going to be a, it's a Saturday, and it's already going to be kind of a longer day, so it'll be a pretty pointed visits. And then the last thing, and Steve, if I screw anything up, let me just get the picture up real quick. So, you know, thanks to Steve. I met with Steve and John DiGennaro today. As you know, Steve worked with a company to get that, the, you know, the sign out in front of the building. They, I met with Steve and John today to discuss a video board. Think of it kind of like a Jumbotron that you might see at, you know, a professional stadium, just not quite as jumbo as, as the Jumbotrons, but still a pretty good-sized video board that would go down on our stadium field. We have a kind of a rendering here of what it would look like. This is our current scoreboard. It would be adjacent to that, which is actually a nice feature in some of these things, because in other, I don't know if anyone has been to Newtown, they, they have one of these. And what happens is, if you don't have the scoreboard on there, a lot of the display is, is lost by, you know, the score, you know, what down it is, how many yards to go, and all that. Because we have this, the video board would be, you know, totally dedicated to, to just that, to video. Like I said, Steve is working with the company, it's Power Ad, same company that helped with the sign out front. Very exploratory at this point right now, but basically, the premise is that Power Ad would front the money for the video board, and then, you know, then work to finance the money to fundraise it for it. So, or, or fundraise to finance the project. The district would be responsible for the installation, and I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end, because really, you know, at the end of the day, I want this thing to be net zero for, for the district. The board itself costs about 100, between $100 and $110,000 installations, another $40,000 to $50,000. The only hiccup we have right now that, that we can see is, is that in order to have the equipment to run the board properly protected, we would need to have it in the press box, and we'd need to probably update the press box, something that I think has been needed for a while now, but in order for the press box to, you know, to be able to house it and it not, you know, be, you know, exposed to moisture and whatnot. Again, we're in the exploration phases only right now. Steve and John are going to approach Power Ad to see if they'll, if they will, and I think they've already indicated to some extent for this, that they'll work to incorporate the cost of any press box update into the fundraising. I think right now, you know, we, you know, looked at about $70,000 for an upgrade to the press box. So again, looking to fund, you know, having Power Ad come up with the money for the video board, have Power Ad come up with the money to update the press, press box to get the equipment in there. Like I said, have the, to be, the goal here is to be net zero to the district. You know, what we would, what we would ask of our booster club to then do is to try to fundraise for the installation charges, and that, like I said, about $40,000 to $50,000 in installation, in installation charges is the, is the estimate right now. I think we can do that. I think there's some things that we could do. I think also, one of the things is, if people know something like this is, you know, a possible project, that, you know, they'll get behind it to do that. And I think, Steve, we would be looking at like fall of 2023?
Yeah, I think that's realistic. So like you said, the biggest issue is really the press box. You know, there's, there's no way we could take the equipment that would be, would be needed to run it and put it in the existing press box. There's holes in it, rodents get in it, nothing, you know. We'd be talking about some expensive equipment that we just couldn't put in that particular, the press box as it is. So Power Ad is basically a professional booster club, that's probably the best way I could describe them, where they would, you know, basically be the point people put fundraising to project. They gave them a couple sets, and then one without the press box and one with the press box. You know, as Joe said, they basically, the risk they take is they front some of the money for us to get the sign quicker than we'd ever be able to get it if we were trying to get it on our own. Again, Newtown did this, you know, that's how they got their video board. And like Joe said, their video board is basically on the left side of what you see there, and they have to use, you know, a portion of that for their scoreboard, where we would not have to. But the first, your first obstacles really are press box, and then the rest of it is, you know, Power Ad does a lot of the fundraising for the board itself on our behalf, so.
And the, the structure, I should have said, Steve, you know, built within this, within the fundraising structure after the board is paid for, is the ability for the district to generate revenue from advertisements on the, on the board afterward. So there's projections.
The cost of the board is, is made, then it's profit for the district. If we do the press box as well, obviously, you have the, you've got to get the cost of the press box and the board before the district starts to, to get money. Not to tell Newtown's business, but they project in year four, Newtown get about $20,000 of office and profit from what they did. And they raised, they raised the initial cost of the board in about six or seven months.
Where's the revenue to Power Ad? How do they, do they take a percentage of the booster dollars?
Exactly, exactly, Justin. They take a percentage of the fundraising. And there's different, again, I don't, it's, it's very preliminary, and I can bore you with a lot of numbers, but yeah, they take a percentage, and there's different levels of ad and different things they would be getting in return for their ad money, depending on what they are.
Dennis?
That's just a mock, it doesn't have naming rights yet, right? This is just a demonstration.
There's no, yeah.
Alright, so that has to be obviously arranged, right?
Yeah.
And then the profies, as I'm understanding, have we, have we checked them to make sure that 100% of the proceeds, proceeds are going for this? So we know where our cap is at 170, whatever it is to pay for this, and after that, we get the proceeds from the ads? Okay, they don't get a percentage of that going on, do they?
They do, because they're, they're, the risk they're taking is fronting the money to get for us to get.
Okay, is there any cap on that, or it's too preliminary to even discuss?
We don't have, we just, they threw numbers, they, we haven't seen like an official contract yet either, and I'm sure that'll be.
Thank you.
It's a good segue, though, because one of the things I was, you know, again, very preliminary conversations right now, but if anyone's interested, if a board member's interested, we'd love to have someone, you know, sit when we meet with the company next, which, you know, I think we're going to do in the next few weeks or months or so.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah. Was the press box, it was in capital, was it up for this?
You know, it's a good question. I believe it is in capital, and I should have, I should have checked that before we came.
I think it's a couple, I remember with Diane, but I want to say it's a couple, I don't think it's, it's not in this year. It's a, if it's not, a year after, it's two years out, but it wasn't nearly 70 grand either. I think, I think it was 25, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But it was at least a year, if not two years out, Jeff.
Do you, do you, do you remember when we, I believe it was a student did the dugouts for the Capstone project?
Yeah.
Do you remember the cost for the?
For the dugouts? I don't know why 50 grand sticks in my head, but that was for the, or do you know, Kev?
I don't remember.
Uh, because I know they did, but that was, that included the, the baseball and softball dugouts.
Press box was 25 grand, fiscally, you were 24.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, I think what, what makes this probably more than 25 grand is the fact that you need space in there to, to do this. So you'd be, you'd be increasing the footprint on it where that probably was not, and it was probably just fixing it structurally.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
So if anyone's interested, if they want to sit with us, just shoot me an email afterwards or something.
You can sign me up, Joe.
Thanks.
Joe, we have a presentation?
We do.
Next.
I am happy Adrian Kazmeyer and Alex Nelson.
They're going to be using the board?
They're going to be using the board, yep. To talk about communication boards, very exciting stuff.
I actually have two handouts for you guys to look at as I'm speaking. Paul, hand that up first.
We could share. We're at the same table.
Hey, Trouble. How's it going?
Yeah, we could share.
We got it.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah, if you don't have enough, you could share.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. For everyone who doesn't know me, my name is Alex Nelson. I'm a speech-language pathologist. I'm primarily at Monroe Elementary, but I'm also at MASIC too. Kind of the idea behind this project for me is a very specific population of students that I've worked with, especially in district over the past three years since I've started here. But before I get into my actual idea and the underpinnings behind it, I just want to give a little bit of background about what a speech-language pathologist does during the school day, and then give you a couple definitions, just so, as I'm referencing during my presentation, that you already have that knowledge at the forefront of your mind. So when I say SLP, I'm referring to myself as a speech-language pathologist. We can work with individuals across the lifespan. However, in schools, SLPs typically work directly or indirectly in these five specific ways. So I think when you hear SLP, we all think of like, oh, she works with that student to help, you know, fix their sounds, or they can't say their Rs. Or maybe another one that might come to mind is first student with fluency issues, someone who might stutter. But we actually do have a much broader impact than that. Language is a huge one. We work with students who have expressive language needs. When I say expressive, I mean like how we formulate sentences, receptive language needs, so that's more of like listening comprehension, and then also social skills and social language. That's another big area that we work with other professionals, like school counselors and school psychologists. We also do tap into cognition, so attention and memory. We work alongside, again, school psychologists and school counselors. And then we also do service individuals who have hearing impairments as well. Just to kind of segue, a large percentage of the students, at least for me, especially in the elementary school age, they require supports with respect to language. And within that umbrella of language, there are some students who are non-speaking, so they communicate in other, in other methods besides oral speech. And some of the ways that we need to provide access points for them to communicate would be something called AAC, that's alternative and augmentative communication. So alternative meaning a completely different system, and you'll get to see some of the examples that I brought with me. And then augmentative meaning that we are kind of just modifying what they already have. So on the first handout I gave you, I kind of just broke down AAC into the most basic components. AAC can be aided or unaided. So unaided AAC is things we all do all the time. I think we probably take it for granted, so things like body language, facial expressions, things that kind of just accentuate the language that we're already using through oral speech, and then aided AAC. So that would be stuff like what I'm about to pass out now. So these can be low-tech options. When I say low-tech, basically just means you're not charging it. So these can be communication books, so students can touch the pictures in order to communicate. They can be communication boards like this. They can be visual schedules. A lot of the preschool classrooms and elementary school classrooms already are kind of inundated with this type of AAC. And then the high-tech AAC is basically anything that needs to be charged. So typically, you find them on a tablet or an iPad, and they're also speech generating devices more often than not. So if I put in a message, it'll say, it'll say it. I don't know if you can hear it, but I'm going to pass these around too, so you can kind of take a look at it. So if I put in a message, it'll say, it'll say it. I don't know if you can hear it, but I'm going to pass these around too, so you can kind of take a look at it. Hold on, and then you hold. That screen. And then I'll pass out the low-tech options this way and then they can go around.
Should we get the low tech?
I. Okay, so while you guys have fun with that, um.
You have no idea.
My, my idea, again, came to me because of a specific population of individuals that I service. My idea is a, an, an aided low-tech option. So it would be a communication board, kind of like the laminated piece of paper that I handed out. Uh, it's coming that way actually, so you'll, you'll all get to see it. Um, but I wanted to kind of bridge the gap between the classroom and then the most naturalistic context of the day, which for me would be recess, and probably one of the most motivating contexts for students. Um, so I came up with the idea of the playground communication boards. Um, these are all very, they're strategically designed, so they're designed from left to right, which also supports early emerging literacy skills. When I say that, I mean, words that are likely to show up at the beginning of a sentence are all on the left. Words that are frequently used in the middle of a sentence, like adjectives and verbs are in the middle, and then nouns or objects are at the right. Um, it's kind of hard to see contrast wise on the screen right now, but they are also color coded by parts of speech. So like verbs are, it kind of looks different on the screen, but they're pink. Um, so it also is kind of like categorizing the parts of speech, again, another early emerging, emerging literacy skill. And, um, before I move on, I'm actually going to, just in real time, just so you guys can kind of get a better picture of how this would look in a conversation with peers, I'm going to have Adrian come up and then we're going to do a couple conversations for you guys, so you can see how it would look, um, if it was on the playground.
We didn't take into account that I'm short, hopefully I can reach the top.
All right, so if you were the student and I could be a peer or an adult, you could start the conversation.
So I may say something like, which would say for I want to play.
And then I could say something like, what do you want to play?
We want to play hopscotch.
And then I could say something like, let's go to hopscotch and then to the slide.
And I can say, I like that. Let's go do it.
So regardless of if she was speaking or, or non-speaking as a peer, she'd be touching, but the, the adult or what we call the neurotypical peer, which just means the student that doesn't require an alternative access to communication, would be modeling by both touching and speaking, so that they're getting two, two method, uh, methods of input. Um, something like this is also super important for self-advocacy skills, just like, um, a neurodivergent peer, meaning someone who does require another access point for communication to get the attention of an, of a staff member or a peer. So we have an example for that too.
And I'm hot, you can't say it, so I'm saying I'm hot.
So I could say, what do you want?
And again, I can be in kindergarten and may not know exactly how to say what I want, so I might just say again, I'm hot.
And then I could say something like, it seems like you're telling me you're hot, maybe you need something different. In that case.
I need my talker or my AAC book, because some kids have their own system, like what's being passed around now, that has specific vocabulary for them, more than what's on here, so they can ask for their own system, their own device that way.
Right, so this is just kind of like, these are probably bound to come up in natural speech on a playground in a conversation. And then this is for a peer, like Adrian said, who already has either, um, a tablet or they have their own communication book with much more vocabulary, so in that case, that peer could go into more depth of why they're hot, what they need. Maybe they need water, maybe they need to go inside, maybe they need a break.
And if I can just jump in, I think this is super important. I'm the preschool speech and language pathologist, and we have five students who bring out either an iPad or a communication board out to the playground. But if you think about how that works logistically, having an iPad on your hip doesn't, when they're trying to go up and down the slide, um, going on the swing, so oftentimes they put their iPad or their communication board on the ground. Then they have no way to communicate. But if you're outside and you're three, and you have a big board like this, and you want to tell your teacher something, and you can just go, or we teach them just to go to this, and the teacher can get the iPad or the communication board and that child can communicate. So when I think about having something like this for the preschool students alone, it would be a huge benefit, for sure.
There is time for questions and answers at the end, but does this make sense, the way that it would be used so far?
How would it be weatherproof? How would you?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to get to that, but the sign would be made, um, of a specific type of aluminum that would be basically weatherproof. And it would also have to be put in a specific location, um, kind of like in the shade type of thing, so, but yeah, specific material. Any other questions?
That's fascinating. Uh, my, my question is, are any of the symbols, because some would lead themselves to sign language? Did you incorporate some of that into this, so that they can get both?
Yep, some of them actually are already, like, this is the symbol for play. A lot of times, that's a really good point, so verbs are really hard concepts to put as symbols. So typically, when you're making communication boards for non-speaking individuals, the verbs usually show up in sign language.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone want to try and make a sentence? No, no takers?
All right, I'm going to continue. Okay, so this is kind of just my why behind the board. Um, for me, I think it's threefold. Um, I think first, I don't want to, I don't know, the word stigma is a big word, right, or a strong word, but I, I do think there still is a lack of knowledge base. I mean, unless you're like a parent of a child who's non-speaking or you directly work with them, it's not something that most people have an abundance of knowledge of, right? Um, so I think having it be part of the community like that, where both typical and, you know, neurodivergent peers can have kind of a common ground to come together and have a conversation, um, leads to my second point, which is social inclusion. Um, I like things that are naturalistic. I like it to be intrinsically motivating. So having this be, you know, part of what's already one of the most motivating parts of the day for most kids, I think is essential. Um, and it kind of creates a bridge between those two worlds, right? Whether, whether you're speaking or non-speaking, whether you already have an AAC system, or, you know, you're a new AAC learner, I think the, the, the design is simple enough, um, but it also kind of pulls everyone together in a community sort of sense. Um, the last point is just, it's highly supported by research. Um, if anything, it promotes language development in both typical and neuro, neurodivergent peers. Um, skills like turn-taking, participation, commenting, requesting, um, even those early emerging literacy skills I talked about, just because of that intentional design of the board. Um, and then it also does work to reduce, I hate calling them challenging behaviors, but I mean, a lot of, you know, students that might be non-speaking or have AAC systems do get frustrated a lot of the time because they might not be understood unless, um, they're communicating with someone who's more familiar with them and their communication style. So this is kind of opens the door so that they can become more immersed with and gain a wider repertoire of communication partners. Um, so this is kind of going back to Shannon's question. This is what the board will look like ultimately. Um, it definitely will be anchored by two posts. Um, it will be made of a special aluminum material, um, that kind of protects it from weather, um, in the outside environment. I would like it to be wider than it is taller. Um, my goal is for it to be on all elementary playgrounds and the preschool playgrounds, so it would have to be adjusted height-wise, right? You don't want it to be, um, taller than your shorter student. So those are, those are kind of the key, um, design plans that I have in place. But I also wanted to touch on one more important point. Um, the communication board that you already saw is made with a specific symbol set that's, um, very widely recognized by a lot of users who have AAC systems, but there's also another symbol set that is just as commonly recognized and universally accepted. So the board ultimately will be double-sided. Um, they will be, it will be a mirror of each other, same content, same order, but it will be the two different symbol sets. Um, so that way, all the AAC users in district will have their symbolic representation as part of the board already. Um, it'll also be more, it might be more familiar, especially I'm thinking for the younger ones who already have an AAC system, they might just be more, um, pulled toward one side of the board, but it's the same exact content on both sides. Um, so this is kind of my who. So yes, it was inspired by students with complex communication needs, but again, it supports, um, and promotes language growth for really all individuals in district, especially those preschool students in the younger elementary. Um, and again, when I, I mentioned, I mentioned this earlier, when I say, when I say terms like neurodivergent, I'm really saying, you know, students who might be on the spectrum, or students who might have ADHD, students who might have specific syndromes. Um, but again, I'm really thinking of this more as an access point, um, and a bridging between worlds so that those peer relationships can form, um, during one of the most important, important social routines of the day. Just little pictures, um, ultimate goals, like I said again, would be to put it on the preschool playground, Monroe L, Fon Hollow, Stephanie. And I would really like it to be, um, a community thing and have one at Wolf Park, especially with, um, the new playground coming into play too. This is just the process, so right now, um, the boards are technically created. I'm still, still working on the opposite side, which again, would be the mirror content, just with the other symbol set. Um, and then the signs would be printed, um, Superior Signs is going to do it in Monroe. And then they would be installed hopefully in the spring, when the weather is better. Do you have any questions? Yes, and, and the, the funds for this came from an anonymous donor, to which I am so grateful, because this is super exciting.
That was my question, that was my question.
Yes.
Yeah, really? It's paid for by an anonymous donor?
Yes.
For each school? Or just Monroe L?
For all the schools. Each sign is about, um, three to $400.
Is that including the protective covering for graffiti?
Yes.
I bet you didn't approach the park system yet.
What was that?
You haven't approached, you said Wolf Park.
Yeah, that's, that's probably going to be a separate entity, but, yeah.
They're figuring to reach out to the Playground Foundation.
Yeah.
Kids Creation, yeah.
One of the people on there is a speech therapist.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I work with that, that's why. For the Monroe Playground Foundation?
Kids Creation.
Is a speech therapist? Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get in touch with you after.
How often did the symbols change, sorry?
This is going to be my question.
What was that?
Sorry, go ahead and ask it.
You ask it.
How often did the symbols change?
You mean?
The diagrams that you have, the icons you're using.
Would you ever have to add to it? Is that what you're trying to ask, like that?
No, no, this is, I'm hoping that this is kind of like a landmark and we can, we can leave it alone for a long time. These are actually based off, the nouns and verbs and pronouns in the, the question starters that were chosen are among the most like frequently used in the English language, so they're chosen for a specific reason.
Gotcha, so there, you don't see a need like that, you would have to add to it later on?
I do, I do want to like touch base with preschool and see if there might be any combinations that might need to be made there. Um, but I think overall, it's pretty much set.
Thank you for your presentation, for thinking of it, and, um, thank you to that anonymous donor, that's amazing.
Yeah.
I'm super excited.
Great idea, great job.
Yeah, very, very great.
Great job.
Thanks, Al.
Okay, we're all excited about that project, that's great, thank you very much. Uh, we have no old business, which is next on our agenda, so I'm going to jump to new business. We have curriculum first review. I have to move again?
So Dennis touched on this already, at, at Wednesday's Curriculum Council, Mike and Kevin presented on some changes to the math curriculum at the high school, and, uh, they did a great job, I'll let them take over.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, we're, we're going to talk tonight about, um, a proposal to the middle school math, uh, progression, uh, at Jacquet Allen STEM. These changes would take him to, uh, effect, uh, in the next school, 2022, 2023 school year. Uh, there are two parts to this, one, we're going to talk about, uh, changes to the names of a few of the courses that we, uh, we have at the middle school, and also we're going to look, we're going to talk about condensing, um, two classes into one at the eighth grade level. So presently, um, at Jacquet Allen STEM.
It's math, not ideas.
Exactly. Uh, presently at, uh, Jacquet Allen STEM, these are the progressions of courses, and just kind of give you a quick overview. Uh, going from fifth grade to the sixth grade, um, we place above, you know, 50, 45 to 50 kids into a pre-algebra course. It's, it's considered a double accelerated course. Um, and the idea is that, you know, that's the, the line around the bottom, that those students would then go on to Honors Algebra I in seventh grade, and then to Honors Geometry in eighth grade. And the idea we, behind double accelerations, they're allowed to then progress through the high school to, um, some higher level courses, calculus, statistics, uh, by the time they reach their, their senior year of high school. A majority of the students, when they come in, they'll take what's called Math Six, and that's the Connecticut Standards for Mathematics course. Um, those students then will progress in seventh grade to a pre-algebra course. Um, and then seventh grade, near the, around April, we start putting, uh, together placement, uh, of the students into, in three levels. Um, the three levels presently are Fundamentals of Algebra, which a majority of the students will go to, and that's an eighth grade Common Core Math Standards course. Or they'll be accelerated to a college prep Algebra I, so they'd end up skipping over those eighth grade standards right into a, a high school Algebra I course. Um, and a number of them are also placed in, into an Honors Algebra I course. And the numbers, uh, underneath are just the number of students, um, that were placed in the, in, in each of the courses. Currently this year.
So this conversation has been going on, you know, for a couple of years actually, you know, Jack, it was about this conversation previously, um, and I continued it with Kevin. One of the most important things that we know, and as we've seen, um, through the last, with Sback and the last, you know, 10, 12 years, is that we have to make sure that grade level standards are being, you know, met by students. It, our progression as it is now is more reflective on algebra progression than it is on grade level middle school standards progressions. And what the research is showing us is, when you have the grade level progression, for most, you're going to do better. In high school, you're going to do better, you know, when you have that full battery of work. So we wanted to make sure our, our school reflected that. We also did not want to deny the fact that we know, and all the research has shown, that no area has taken a harder hit in the last two years than math. The nationwide, I mean, math scores have really, you know, math mastery has really been hurt, um, by this pandemic. And we want to respond to appropriate, um, and effective acceleration. And we think the way to do that is really to focus our work on these grade level standards. And where are these kids, where do they need to be in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, um, to accelerate them to a level they need to be at by the time they graduate high school. Um, and lastly, it's, it speaks to the middle school culture and philosophy. The idea that the language of honors, um, The idea that the language of honors is really a language of high school. We don't have a middle school transcript. You know, no one is saying, ah, we love you at Yale, but you weren't in Honors Algebra. You know, no one in, you know, in seventh grade, no one's looking at that. And in effect, what we're saying, when we talk about our curriculum councils, when they're nine years old, they're making some decisions about whether they're honors students or not in math. So this sort of steps back from that idea and makes us be, I think, more appropriate and developmentally appropriate for students. So Kevin's gonna walk through what that progression would look like. Oh, not yet.
I took a look at other schools in the state, and I took a look at our Derry B. schools. They range from Avon to Newtown to Fairfield. And what I wanted to look at is really the eighth grade, focus on the eighth grade, and see how many options these schools are giving for students in mathematics in eighth grade. Because presently, we give four options. We have the fundamentals, two Algebra I courses, and then the geometry. And what I found was, you know, a majority of them really focus on two to three options in the eighth grade for their math courses. There's one student has four like us, that's Newtown. There's another school district that only has one option, it's just like a Math VIII course. But we really saw a majority of them are either two options or the three. And we also looked, I wanted to see what type of, how they're named, and really the names go across the board, from Common Core VIII to Algebra, to Math VIII, to Advanced Math, to, they just really, there wasn't a set pattern in terms of what these courses were named at the middle school. So this is what we want to propose in terms of new sequence. And some of it's the same, it's really, we're looking at grade six, and there's not gonna be a change to grade six. There'll be two options, one will be Math VI, one will be the Pre-Algebra class. We'll still look to place about 50 kids into the Pre-Algebra Double Accelerated course. So really, grade six is not gonna change. The first is, we'd like to change the Pre-Algebra name in grade seven to Math VII. So again, it'll better describe that course in terms of covering the math Connecticut Core Standards. And another reason, it's also confusing. A lot of parents see Pre-Algebra, and they say, all right, my kid's going to Algebra in eighth grade, and that might not necessarily be the case. They might go to what we called originally the Fundamentals of Algebra, which again is a pre-algebraic course. So this kind of clears up a lot of their confusion in terms of names. In eighth grade, instead of, you know, again, calling it the Fundamentals of Algebra, we wanna call it Math VIII. Again, it describes the eighth-grade Connecticut Core Standards of Mathematics. And then we're looking to condense the two levels of Algebra I to one that we want to call Algebra I. And that would allow, instead of having that placement and really getting placed into a track from seventh to eighth grade, will now allow us to take a look at those Algebra I students, give it another year, and get an idea of those students, and are they able to then go on to the honors program at the high school? So that'll allow the eighth grade to collect more data on that and determine, these are students who I put in Honors Geometry, these are students we want to put in a 20-level Geometry as they proceed through their high school courses. In terms of the other track, we decided to drop the Honors out of Algebra I and Honors out Geometry. It doesn't change that course at all. It's, you know, it's double-accelerated, so in itself, you know, this is an advanced course for those students. So that we just, let's just call it, and a lot of the schools do the same, just call it Algebra I and Geometry.
And some of our Honors Geometry kids do go on to regular Algebra II in ninth-grade years. So it doesn't, it also doesn't have that, oh, I just dropped from Honors in eighth grade, too. I mean, maybe those kids, the way they developed during the middle school, they're better served to not be honored by Algebra II times, you know, making those decisions early on. So it also gives us that flexibility, so those students are properly placed.
The other part of it is, in terms of addressing the, the students are presently in eighth grade, and as they're moving forward, with the last year and a half with the COVID, we have found that there are some gaps, some holes. And this is, you know, if we look at the present eighth-grade class, we look at our, you know, Honors Geometry, about 84% are at or above goal, Honors Algebra I, 81%. We start looking at the College Prep Algebra I, and these are the kids we accelerated, and maybe a little more than half of them are presently at or above goal for the S-Back, and then fundamentals are at 50%. So this, you know, this also lends to the need to really focus on grade-level standards and make sure they have this foundation as they're going into the high school and taking the higher-level mathematics classes. Looking at the path, this is historically, and this for the last four years, students that came out of Fundamentals of Algebra into the 20-level and 30-level in algebra. In 20-level, there are two levels of Algebra I in ninth grade, and two levels of Geometry, too. The 20-level is a little more advanced, it goes a little bit quicker, it goes more in-depth, does more work in the application of the algebra, where the 30-level is a lower level, it's more skill-based, the pace is slower. You really want to make sure the kids in Algebra I get a good foundation of Algebra I as they move through their math courses. These are the percentage of students who left Fundamentals of Algebra in eighth grade over the last four years and went into either of these two classes. They don't add up to 100%, because then there's another part of it. Either they left the district, or they took another, like a special ed math class or another class there. And you see, there's been a progression from 2018 to 2021, in terms of more students coming out of Fundamentals, going into the higher of the two Algebra I classes as they approach ninth grade. Looking at the College Prep Algebra I, and again, these students are coming out of the College Prep Algebra I and really going right into the 20-level. We feel that, you know, some of them could have actually gone into Honors Geometry. It was a placement decision based on the eighth-grade teachers. But it's a consistent, from the College Prep Algebra I straight into a 20-level Geometry course throughout the four years. And then when you look at the third group, the Honors Algebra I students, it depends on the year. Some have a 50/50, two of the years, majority went to Honors Geometry as opposed to the 20-level Geometry. And again, as we condense it to the one Algebra course, we're really taking both those groups together, and then at the end of the eighth-grade year, then deciding which ones are on the path going towards the honors track, and the other ones are going to the 20-level. In addition to this, there are other things we are doing in the middle school, other interventions that we're trying to help support these students in terms of getting the grade-level standards and really understand the topics on the S-Back. So in addition to this move and condensing of levels and changing names, I want to just add that there are other things we're doing at the middle school level to help support these students as they're going through their math progression underway to the high school. Any questions?
Yeah. I think this is great. I just wanted to say a couple of things. So sometimes when we have too many decisions in front of us, we make the wrong one. And I think one of the things that you're correcting is streamlining, and I think this will also help faculty, too, because your faculty is segregated into so many different courses in that eighth-grade progression, so you can even have more collaboration around that, too. But one of the things that I always had trouble with, with the math progression that we do here from six to eight, is that double acceleration. Because, you know, you're a fifth-grade parent, and now you have to have this kind of conversation about, you know, is my student a STEM student? Will they do well in that? Should we, you know, put them in a higher-level class? But here's who it helps. You can't like double-accelerate in science, right? So when you have students who are really strong in STEM areas, and they can double-accelerate in math, you're talking about the top, you know, 2% to 4% to 5% of your students in the school system. When they get to their senior year, they can take Calc BC, they could take AP Stats, and if they're gonna go to college, it's unfortunate, because if they're gonna be a math major, sometimes they have to take those classes again anyway. But if they're gonna go into the hard sciences, into chem, bio, or physics, they're able to take a lot of the science classes at MasIC while they've already double-accelerated in math, and they can carry some of those AP credits into college. And when they get to college, they have, some people have a semester, some people have three, four, or five classes. And that's really helpful, because when they get higher up in their major, they're able to take all these different classes because they've gotten that out of the way. So I totally get the Yale comment, and I totally agree with you, and I hate that you have to think about, like, college readiness at sixth grade. But the whole plan, it gives that top 2% to 5% of students in that specific STEM area the ability, when they go later on, to have this whole plethora of options that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So I know that there could potentially be like a lot of anxiety and a lot of, you know, math, I've always said, you know, it could be an anxiety-inducing subject, but it really helps those top students. And so I think it's a great plan. Just wanted to kind of go.
We also, you know, we also find some kids that, you know, maybe aren't on that trajectory in the middle school, but then they'll double up in a math class when they get to high school and get to the, you know, the BC and the AP Stats and whatnot. And, you know, different kids, you know, they develop differently. I mean, you know, math is, you know, especially once you start getting into geometry and whatnot, you're talking about abstract concepts, and developmentally, some kids aren't ready in seventh grade and they are in 10th grade.
Right.
Yeah, we're saying definitely seeing an increase of more students who would like to double up with the Geometry and the Algebra II.
Any other questions for Mike or Kevin? Dennis, you're thinking?
Yeah, I am thinking. I'm trying to think at all times, but I think, I think I didn't do you justice the way I described the meeting. As you, I thought, I think, the other benefit, it's kind of intrinsic, is that you're not labeling kids as honors or pre beforehand, and then they change, and you're stigmatizing them to a certain degree. So you really want them to work to grade level, and I think that's a great plan to do it. Kudos.
Yeah, I'm glad it's on your radar, and you're making adjustments. It sounds great. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is an executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session and to include the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director of finance? Nick makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Jerry does.
Jerry?
Yeah, I did.
Any, okay? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We will move into executive session and then come out for an anticipated vote. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, it is 8:38, and Jerry made a motion, seconded by Christine, to come out of executive session. So we are back in public view. Do I hear a motion to extend the All-Star contract for five years with final agreement to be presented to the board when completed? Shannon?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor? Aye, unanimous approved. Mr. Stevens?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Jerry, seconded by Christine, without objection, passes. Good night, everybody.